We will call the Stevens Point area Public School District's school, regular school board meeting for Monday, May 13th to order, and we will have a roll call and verification of form, Heidi.
Certainly. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Evil?
Here.
Ms. Fang?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Rannell?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Everyone is present.
All right, so the first item on our agenda after that is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have the students from Jefferson Elementary. We have Sophie Dirkie, Rose Varga, Lucas Chang, and Pearl Varga helping us with the pledge, and whenever you're ready, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a sec there.
Okay, let's all wave at your parents. Parents, thanks for bringing your kids up tonight. Want to take some pictures, go ahead. Okay. Miss O'Donnell's gonna take the picture.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Come over here. Oh my gosh.
I get to say, "Here, let's start."
Parents, if you look at the website tomorrow, this'll be up on the URL.
Thank you so much. I love your t-shirt.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thanks for, good job for doing it the last night.
Good job, later.
Thanks for helping.
You guys did an awesome job. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming tonight. I know you wanted to be here tonight.
Thank you. Very good job.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, like your t-shirts.
Thank you very much. Good job. Good job. Thanks for coming.
So if I can beg the indulgence of the board, I'm gonna have Sarah do a little part of her communications report right now, because it's something that the board needs to be aware of, as well as people who are here tonight, as well as the community out there.
Yeah, thanks, thank you. So you may recall, last month, we had difficulty live streaming the board meeting to YouTube. So, Mr. Bremowski does a great job of, typically when we're here, we're live streaming to a web channel, and then we're also live streaming to Channel 982, and then we're keeping that and then posting that later through a couple of various channels. So last month, we realized that that YouTube piece is not working. Initially, we believed that was a subscriber issue. However, late last week, we received some additional communication from Google indicating that G Suite for Education would no longer be supporting existing content on accounts that are branded accounts, which would be our account. So it's not an "us" issue, it's not a Mr. Bremowski issue. It's really, we're gonna have to take a look, not only for the board meetings, but also for the district in general, to kind of troubleshoot that. So it will immediately affect how we typically broadcast that meeting tonight. But Mr. Bremowski, I know, has been working to find a solution along with the tech team, and I'm helping him along as well. So just wanted to give you that update, in case you get questions, or people are wondering kind of why that's happening. That's sort of what's going on, and hopefully we'll know more by the end of this week.
So if anybody has any questions about why they're not able to livestream YouTube, have them get in touch with Sarah.
And everything else afterwards will remain the same. So we'll continue to do the post-production, we'll continue to post that on the website. It will, for now, go on YouTube, just because that's how we're delivering contents on the web. But I anticipate that might have to look a little bit different moving forward, so thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, so we are moving into student and staff recognition, and we have Washington Elementary School student Izzy Gala is presenting the Mandana Bliss Award to teacher Allison Banker.
My all-time favorite teacher was Ms. Banker. She set such a good example to me and all of her other students. I can stop by her class at any time and tell her anything that I need to tell somebody that I don't want to tell them right away. She says hello and goodbye to every single person she sees pass by. She gives me a hug almost every day. Ms. Baker always had fun things for us to do, like the compliment cards. We'd write down a nice note and put it into the other person's bucket that you wrote about. We got to do stuff like make butter, and make your own soda, and fun stuff like that. I loved Fridays, because we could always play games, and play with Play-Doh, and just have a lot of fun. There was also the homework rail. And whenever you got your homework done, you got to spin the wheel. And my all-time favorite part of the day was at the end of the day, when she would read us a book while we got to relax. She also picked out the best book, so go to her if you want any suggestions for a book. She always gave us candy cups, drops Vaseline, and everything that we needed. She didn't get that mad at us when we did not get our homework done. She always helped me become a better student from an early age, and has made more of an impact on me than any other teacher has so far. I'll always love you, Ms. Banker.
Wow.
Nice job. Congratulations. We'd like to say that. We're gonna go up here and grab the picture.
How sweet of you.
Let's go right up. Pictures, any of you?
I'll take one. All right, you ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Come here. That was wonderful. Give you a hug. That was wonderful. You did a great job. Oh, come here. You get to go here now. Congratulations. That's so sweet. Really nice.
Good job.
Wonderful. You're a lot. Thank you for the readings. You did a wonderful job. You're so sweet.
Hey, that was a great speech. Good job. Congratulations.
And we also have Spash student Mitchell Reese, and he will be presenting the Mandana Bliss Award to teacher Matt Ramlett.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Reese, and I'm a sophomore at Spash. I've known Mr. Ramlett for about two years now. He was not my teacher last year, but I went on the Washington DC trip with him, where I really got to know him as a person. This year, he has been my US History teacher. Mr. Ramlett deserves this award for many reasons. The fact that he volunteers his time to organize and lead a large group of high school students to Washington DC shows his patience and passion for students and learning. It was an opportunity that I will never forget. In the classroom, Mr. Ramlett's really cool. He is very funny, and makes learning about the history a lot more. He knows how to fully explain something so that everyone in the class understands it, and he is constantly sending us emails and reminders of grades at quarter or mid-quarter during the year, which I find very helpful, and it keeps me up to date of what I have to do. He really cares about his students, and he challenges us every day. In class, he gives us freedom to work with other students, he gives us choices in every day. Class is different, which I like, because US History can be sometimes a little bit boring, but he makes it less boring. Congratulations, Mr. Ramlett. You're a great teacher, and I hope to take another class with you later on.
All right. So, thank you, Mitchell. I very much appreciate this. Grateful, the opportunity to have you as a student, to have you in class, and I'm just happy to know that all the work goes toward making class more enjoyable for you and my other students. Thank you.
All right, at me. One, two, three. Thank you.
Well done. Hi, nice job. Really good. Congratulations.
Good job, Mitchell.
You made history less boring. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
So I just want to note, this is the end of the year, and we are incredibly blessed in the Stevens Point Public School District with incredible teachers who are dedicated to their day-to-day mission, but also who are recognized at a state level for their accomplishments with students, staff, and schools. So tonight is a night of celebration. We have a number of incredible awards that our teachers have received as a result of their hard work and diligence this year, and this is why we're here. It's what we do day by day to make a difference in the lives of students, and the fact that our staff is recognized both Mandana Bliss by their students, as well as statewide, is just an incredible accomplishment. The first is one of our students, and Sophie Sagelski is a Spash senior, and she's going to be presented by Dan Hoppy, who is our Spash Social Studies teacher. She's been named a Wisconsin State Senate Scholar for the 24th Wisconsin Senate District.
Yes, proud to be here to give Sophie this award. Sophie Sagelski is a Spash senior, and she was named the Wisconsin State Senate Scholar for the 24th Wisconsin Senate District. The Senate Scholar Program is an intensive, week-long educational program offered by the Wisconsin State Senate. Admission to the program is highly competitive, and is limited to 33 academically exceptional Wisconsin high school juniors and seniors, one from each of the Senate districts across the state. Each Senate Scholar receives a hands-on, up-close view of the legislature's role in our democracy. Senate Scholars gain experience in such diverse areas as policy development, constituent relations, and processing legislation by working with senators, legislative staff, and University of Wisconsin faculty. So Sophie took part in this program back in February, and was able to meet the other Senate Scholars, and they spent, like I said, an intensive week at the state capitol, and kind of seeing the ins and outs of government. And it's quite an honor, obviously, since there's only 33 per year. On some extra other notes, Sophie was an excellent candidate to receive this honor. She is very engaged in politics, and studying that, and hopes to continue that, majoring in political science at Northern Michigan University next year. She also has been very active in a number of groups and clubs at Spash as well. She's a member of the Gender Sexuality Alliance, and is co-president of the Feminist Club. So I know that she is going to continue to pursue her interests in politics, and probably see her name much more often. So I'm happy to give this award to Sophie.
Congratulations. Did you want to say a few things? You don't have to.
I can say a few things. So basically, the week was just an inside view on the Wisconsin State Legislature. So we got to meet with people, legislators specifically from our districts, outside of our districts. I got to do a video with Patrick Testin, where I told him a little bit about what we did in the program. We met with drafting attorneys at the LRB, we learned how to draft a bill, and then at the end of the week, on Friday, we actually got to do like a mock debate of the bill, which was really interesting to see how that all goes. So it was a really good experience, and I would recommend it for anybody who is interested in government, or just wants to see how things work.
Thank you.
All right, and at me. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Watch for the government and politics. Watch those legislators, and come back to us with any news you have. Oh, damn. Sorry.
Sorry, I'm just making it up.
No, we're just getting up and down.
I just don't want to make a stand.
Thanks for not abandoning me.
Our next presentation is the 2019 Wisconsin Association of Colleges for Teacher Education Pre-Service Educator Award, and it will be presented to teacher Chris Kunkel from Bannock Elementary School by Jessica Champion, principal of Bannock Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica Champion, the principal at Bannock, and it is my honor and privilege to recognize Chris Kunkel on behalf of the Oscar Neil Celebrating of Teacher and Learning Award, as well as the recognition of outstanding early-career educators and pre-service educator mentors. So here's the write-up. Chris has served as a mentor teacher in numerous, to numerous UWSP teacher candidates spanning well beyond five years. Not only has Chris been an exemplary cooperating teacher to multiple student teachers, she has also served as a host teacher and classroom for the UWSP Elementary Methods Block, the EMB Field Experience Students. Likewise, when additional placements are needed, Chris actively recruits and assists other educators to become host teachers in classrooms to provide the foundation of elementary curriculum methods to aspiring educators. So when they say "five years well beyond," it's well beyond. So thank you, Chris, for everything you do.
Thank you.
I don't want to say you've been around a long time, but my son was in... I know. My son was around when you were there.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I don't think, I don't think we can underplay the importance of that mentor in that initial experience in the classroom with a new teacher. With the teacher still finishing their education, and trying to determine if that's what they want to do in life, and we're truly blessed with people in this district who take it incredibly serious, to take these young teachers under their wing when they're at UWSP, and in those years after UWSP. So thank you, Chris, for the many years of what you've done. All right, we are moving on to the 2019 Wisconsin Association of Student Council's Administrator of the Year. John Volendorf has been named the High School Administrator of the Year, and it will be presented by Connie Nigard, our Director of Secondary Education.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica Champion, the principal at Bannock, and it is my honor and privilege to recognize Chris Kunkel on behalf of the Oscar Neil Celebrating of Teacher and Learning Award, as well as the recognition of outstanding early-career educators and pre-service educator mentors. So here's the write-up. Chris has served as a mentor teacher in numerous, to numerous UWSP teacher candidates spanning well beyond five years. Not only has Chris been an exemplary cooperating teacher to multiple student teachers, she has also served as a host teacher and classroom for the UWSP Elementary Methods Block, the EMB Field Experience Students. Likewise, when additional placements are needed, Chris actively recruits and assists other educators to become host teachers in classrooms to provide the foundation of elementary curriculum methods to aspiring educators. So when they say "five years well beyond," it's well beyond. So thank you, Chris, for everything you do.
Thank you.
I don't need to say anything.
You're gonna get your picture with us, though.
All right, my brother can stand us.
Man?
Come on, family.
No.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, I don't want to say you've been around a long time, but my son was in... I know. My son was around when you were there.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I don't think, I don't think we can underplay the importance of that mentor in that initial experience in the classroom with a new teacher. With the teacher still finishing their education, and trying to determine if that's what they want to do in life, and we're truly blessed with people in this district who take it incredibly serious, to take these young teachers under their wing when they're at UWSP, and in those years after UWSP. So thank you, Chris, for the many years of what you've done. All right, we are moving on to the 2019 Wisconsin Association of Student Council's Administrator of the Year. John Volendorf has been named the High School Administrator of the Year, and it will be presented by Connie Nigard, our Director of Secondary Education.
Good evening. I'm really honored, very honored, to present John Volendorf, who was recognized as the High School Administrator of the Year for the Wisconsin Association of School Councils. And trust me, that John really doesn't like this kind of thing. He's much happier recognizing his staff and his students, because he's quite a humble man. But the most amazing thing about this award is that the students at Spash took a lot of time to nominate John, and he was recognized for this award. He has been honored regionally for the accomplishment as the Region Two Administrator of the Year, and he was formally recognized for the accomplishment at the WASC State Conference on April 28th. So we're really honored to present John Volendorf as the Administrator of the Year.
Connie's right. I'm not really, you know, I don't get nervous at all for graduation, speaking in front of 4,000 people, but I was a little nervous tonight. So, thank you. It's such a privilege to be able to work with students like Jared and Lauren, and you're gonna meet Emily here in a little bit, and you met Sophie, and I could go on and on. We have some amazing teachers. We have an amazing team at Spash there, in the back there tonight, and it's just a privilege to be a recipient to that, and coming from a student makes it even more special. So, thank you.
So speaking of Jared, we would like to invite him up to the podium, because he has some words.
I would just like to say that it's really, really difficult to find words to describe the enormous impact that Mr. Volendorf has had on the Spash student body and the Stevens Point community. Although this award is only given to one administrator in Wisconsin, there was a large number of overly qualified applicants. But I think the one thing that really makes Mr. Volendorf deserving of this is how he makes his students feel valued at Spash. He sees students more than a letter on a transcript, or a number on a basketball court. The limitless opportunity, support, and encouragement he's provided has definitely formed me into the student leader I am today, and I believe that this truly embodies the perfect candidate of this award.
Good job. We're gonna get a picture.
Where'd Connie go? She's hiding. She's hiding. Connie, you gotta come up for your picture.
I've been a superintendent for 20 years, and I've worked, I counted them up earlier, for eight high school principals. Clearly, John is on top of that list. And full disclosure, as a high school principal myself for six, I'd absolutely hire this guy over myself. He does a great job in being a principal of a building the size of Spash is just incredible. Thank you, John.
Got some paparazzi here, John. Couple for me, please. One, two, three. Thank you.
We're so glad you're here. Nice job. Thanks. Thank you. See you soon. You did a nice job. Really nice.
Thank you. Great speech. It was good.
And our next award is CISA 5 Special Education Teacher of the Year, Andrea Marty, and that award will be presented by Caleb Feit, our Director of Student Services.
Good evening. So I get the pleasure to do it this time, to present the Special Education Teacher Award through CISA 5 and the Wisconsin Council for, and I gotta say this, because I'm gonna get it wrong every time, but it's the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services. So they partner together, they provide the Special Teacher Award, and without a doubt, Andrea Marty was a top nomination, and through the student service, so Amy Barazan and Lee Kramer also helped in this recognition. So I'm gonna read the letter that was written on behalf of the nomination. So it is "With great honor and privilege to be able to nominate Andrea Marty for the Special Education Teacher Award, it is difficult to put into words the incredible work that Andrea Marty does on behalf of her students, families, and colleagues. Andrea continues, continually brings innovative and creative problem-solving to every discussion to help many programs she has been instrumental in building at Spash. Andrea has put forth an incredible amount of time and effort to expand Spash's vocational training program by building positive relationships with our community partners, so our students have a variety of job placement opportunities to pursue sentry, I might have, to help build their post-secondary independence. Andrea's eager nature pushed the district to pursue sentry insurance as a project search site four years ago, as well as any grant she can find to continue to expand her transitional programs and supports for the students and families with whom she works. Andrea's work is not only evident at Spash, but is seen in her groundbreaking work on the district level to lead systematic collaboration 712 to help build student success through shared resources, curriculum, and coaching with her secondary colleagues and district leaders. Regardless of the work or time needed to help meet students' needs, Andrea stands ready to put in the hard work to revise her team's schedule, to advocate for her students. Her initiative, creativity, innovation, and unyielding dedication and positivity she brings to her work as an educator, advocate, and collaborative colleague makes her an inspiration to all with whom she works." And that's, that's just baseline. So I really am honored tonight to present to you Andrea Marty as the Special Teacher of the Year Award. And they do it.
I did prepare about a half-hour speech tonight, but they told me there's not time for that, so, thank you.
That's cool.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. We are just blessed to have you. Congratulations. Thank you.
So we are moving into item five, public comments, and we have two people who have signed up to address the board related to 5A, and the first is Nate Olson.
Good evening. My name is Nate Olson. I'm a former Jackson Jaguar and a Bannock Bulldog. I went to PJ Jacobs before graduating from Spash in 2002. I'm the proud father of four Plover Whiting Wildcats. My dad was my high school tech ed teacher, my mom was a specialized EA at Spash. Currently, I teach at Ben Franklin, and I coach at Spash. I'm passionate about our district, because I am a product of our district. My strong ties and community involvement were most likely the reason that you filmed me teaching to help create a video to pass to referendum last fall. In that video, it was said that the district needs to attract and retain quality staff, such as myself and other young people like we saw up here prior to this. Took some time and compiled some data to see what a teacher working 11 years in our district would make at four other surrounding districts, without a master's degree. So I have some charts I'd like to put up here.
Okay, so you can see Marshfield, Everest, Willpaca, and Mozzanie, districts that are similar in size and in close, close to our location, just kind of went north and east and west. After 11 years, pouring my heart and soul into our district, this is where I'm at. I'll kind of put it down here, because it's symbolic, I guess, of our current pay plan. Please ask yourself these questions. Is paying your teachers 24% to 44% less than neighboring districts morally right and fair? If you were a quality teacher looking for a job, which school district would you choose? If you were a teacher in this district, would you be upset that despite gross inequities and a success... the district needs to attract and retain quality staff such as myself and other young people like we saw up here prior to this. Took some time and compiled some data to see what a teacher working 11 years in our district would make at four other surrounding districts without a, without a master's degree. So I have some charts I'd like to put up here. Okay, so you can see Marshfield, Eversville, Paca, and Mozzanee, districts that were similar in size and in close, close to our location, just kinda went north and east and west. After 11 years pouring my heart and soul into our district, this is where I'm at. I'll kinda put it down here because it's symbolic, I guess, of, of our current pay plan. Please ask yourself these questions. Is paying your teachers 24% to 44% less than neighboring districts morally right and fair? If you were a quality teacher looking for a job, which school district would you choose? If you were a teacher in this district, would you be upset that despite gross inequities and a successful referendum, you only received a cost of living wage increase? To say that my teacher group is extremely frustrated would be an understatement. We are tired of being ignored. We are tired of being told we are working on it. When will we see a change? Thank you.
And Dan Hoppy.
I was going to yield my time to Nate if he needed more time, but I think he summed it up, and I would 100% support his comments. So, just second that.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board who did not sign up? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board tonight? Okay, we will move on. Moving into item six, presentations, and our first presentation is our student representative, and this is her final presentation. So, once you're done, we have a certificate and I thank you for you. Go ahead, Lauren.
Well, Showtime 2019 concluded this year's performance on Sunday, May 5. Congratulations to all of our awesome performance, performers, and a big thank you to Mrs. Pionik, Mrs. Mercer, and Mrs. Vasquez for help making the performance a huge success. Last Monday night was the annual Spash Academic Awards Ceremony. We recognized a Student of the Year from each department and also all students with high, high awards, which requires a minimum GPA of 3.8. The Spash senior class also had 84 students who earned the four-year Golden Cup Award for maintaining this GPA every semester since ninth grade. And if you happened to go to Belts afterwards, you would have seen a long line of us seniors participating in the tradition of getting our ice cream in our cup. Tonight is, Spash is holding our Athletic Awards Ceremony. The final choir concert of the year is this Thursday at 7:30 PM, and the final band concert of the year is next Wednesday at 7:30, also held in the Spash Auditorium. We are in the middle of AP exams as they started last week and are every day this week. My class of 2019 took a total of 1,104 AP courses during our four years here at Spash. This Friday is the Spash Senior Cookout during lunch. Our administrators will be grilling hot dogs and serving lunch as we celebrate our final regular Friday of our high school career. Next Thursday, May 23rd, is the final regular day of classes for seniors. We then have graduation rehearsal next Friday morning in the Spash Fieldhouse. Next Friday afternoon as well, graduates will be invited to return to their elementary schools in their cap and gowns to walk the halls one final time and to thank and say goodbye to their elementary teachers. Commencement 2019 is on Sunday, May 26 at 1 PM in the Spash Fieldhouse, and Project Graduation is that night starting at 9 PM. Lastly, I would like to thank all the school board members and the district administration for being so welcoming to me every meeting and for listening to all the amazing things that Spash has to offer. I enjoyed the experience of being part of the board meetings, seeing the cadets from all the elementary schools lead the pledge like I did at that age, and also hearing the Mandana Bliss Awards. Sorry. I am happy to say that I'm passing this responsibility onto upcoming senior Emily Beck. She will be a great representative of Spash and all the great things that Spash has to offer. So, thank you again.
Thank you for your commitment and dedication this past year. We've been a better board by your presence.
Oh, I'm not ready for a picture.
There's always Photoshop.
So excited for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pleasure getting to know you. Good luck in the future.
Thank you very much.
So, item 6B is our communication report. Sarah O'Donnell.
All right, so I will not take up much more of your time. I just wanted to give you an update. Summer school registration closed on Friday, the online portion, so we're now in a blackout period. Mrs. Bens was running some quick numbers today, and we're again up from last year a little bit. Currently, we have 2,400 students enrolled, so not courses that they're taking, but just students that we've enrolled. So they're in the process of kinda going through and making sure we have staff for that and ready to go, and then we will open back up a little bit later. In May, folks can register here if, you know, you're like me, and sometimes you forget to register your kids for summer school. The elementary track meet is taking place next week for all fifth and sixth grade students. It is the 50th anniversary, and I know we'll be hearing more about that later, so I won't talk much about that. Tomorrow night is the retirement dinner. We have 18 individuals retiring from the district that we were made aware of, at least before we sent out invitations for the event. Combined, they have 373 years of service to the district, so we're really looking forward to celebrating them tomorrow. Tiger Trek, E-Cycle, and the Spash Greenhouse Sale will all be taking place this Saturday, so if you thought you had nothing to do, I've just given you three really awesome things to do. Tiger Trek will take registrations on-site. E-Cycle is a great opportunity to get rid of some of your things and support Ben Franklin cause, and the Spash Greenhouse hopefully will stay warm enough to plant some bedding plants here. So, please consider supporting them. And finally, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Education Enrichment Fund. The application period for that closed earlier this month. We received nine applications. The Grant Committee will be meeting Thursday to award those available funds for the upcoming school year. So, the fund was created, just to give you a quick background, in the fall of 2003, and that fund is really meant to fund special projects that need, maybe aren't something that we can fund in that regular budget, right? So a teacher wants to try something new, or there's a collaboration piece that they wanna try, that's, that's really what that committee is meant to do. They started with an opening balance of $15,000, and they've grown that fund to almost $250,000. So, as the committee works to continue to grow that fund, they're able to fund clearly more projects. And we've seen some really great things come out of that. Students go to the Sculpture Park every year out of that fund. We've seen some great STEM projects come out of those grants. So, it's really, we see a lot come in every year, a lot of requests. We could never be able to fund them all right now, given where that fund balance is. If anybody was interested in learning more, or wanted to contribute, you can find more information on our website, or you can always feel free to contact me, and I'd be happy to connect you. Thank you.
Any questions of Sarah?
Sarah, does that, I was here initially when the grant started, and board members actually challenged each other to donate.
I love that idea.
I know, it was pretty great. Do we have any kind of a matching, like if a company wanted to donate, any kind of a matching program for that?
It's a really great question. I would say in the last several years, the committee has, I won't say struggled to raise funds, but hasn't been able to put as much attention on that. So we have folks that give on a regular basis. Mostly, it's district folks that we see contributing to that, so teachers are, or other staff members are giving kind of like a payroll deduct like you would for United Way. So that's traditionally how we've seen. We saw a few companies come in and, and give some bigger donations this year after seeing some publicity we did for the fund.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we do publicity on that?
A little bit, yeah. Yeah. So, so it's, it's housed at the community foundation, right? I, I help that committee kind of organize themselves, but it's really not a district, you know, it's, district benefits from it, but it's not necessarily a district project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Moving into item C, Superintendent's Report.
Reminder regarding graduations, Charles Fernandez Center will be May 23 at 7 PM at Spash. Project Search will be May 24, 10:30 AM at Sentry Insurance Theater, and Spash graduation is Memorial Weekend, May 26 at 1 o'clock in the Fieldhouse. The PJ Jacobs Honor Flight fundraiser raised $4,000, so thank you to PJ Jacobs to send eight veterans on the Never Forgotten Honor Flight. So that's a pretty cool thing. Spring Into Wellness Week was April 22. Thank you to the HR Department for organizing the activities that were sensing spring. There were a number of activities throughout the district regarding wellness. So thank you to Beth Bakunovich, HR Director, and her staff for organizing that. And the last day of school, June 7, for 3K and 4K, June 10 Elementary, and June 11 for secondary students.
And hopefully, we'll never have a winter like we had this, this winter, so we will never have to go into the next week.
I think we're done closing, closing school for inclement weather.
Thank you, Craig. All right, so, item D, 50th Anniversary of Jean LaRose Elementary Fifth and Sixth Track Meet.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Nancy Schuster. I am a physical and adaptive physical educator specialist at Plover Whiting Elementary. I'm also the Elementary PE Department Coordinator, and I am just finishing out my 24th year of teaching in this district. I want to thank you for the opportunity to quick speak with you briefly about one of the most time-honored traditions that we have here in our Stevens Point area school district. I want to give you an update on, and personally invite you to the annual Jean LaRose District Elementary Track and Field Meet, which you received a little invitation and an honorary medal, so please feel free to come and wear that proudly. It is going to be a huge honorable and memorable event. It has been in the planning since the beginning, first day of last year's track meet, when Jean came to me and said, "You do realize that next year's the 50th?" And I was like, "Oh, okay." And we have been discussing this big tradition all year. So, the meet was first held in May of 1970 with nine districts participating, over 200 students for both grades, well, fifth and sixth, so a little over 500, 600 kids. Back then, each school had to hold their qualifying meets at their school and send the best of the best to the meet. Back then, we had Lincoln and Custer and Emerson was part of those nine elementary schools, which no longer exist, and Bannock and Plover Whiting wasn't even in existence. In 2011, the board voted to name and meet, name the meet after Jean LaRose, who was a former PE teacher and a principal in our district, and dedicated that to him in his honor of starting that along with all of his wonderful colleagues. So in 1970, the high school, he will tell you that the track team and cross-country team may not have been as successful as they are now, and they like to kind of give themselves a little pat on the back that they have helped put a spotlight on that sport and the success that we are now in our district and area and state. The meet has been through significant changes, I can tell you, since the beginning. We now have a state-of-the-art timing system, which is ran by our Spash track and field coaches and their staff. We also do all of our entries online, which was a huge time saver, because I used to sit for hours and put in each entry by hand and decide who was in what heat and lane, and I'm so happy that a computer does that for me now. It just takes a lot of time off my plate. Then, we also decided that we needed to have medals, because one of our wonderful colleagues, who used to hand grave the medals on washers and paint them and do the little holes and all the strings and everything, retired, and when, nobody else wanted to take that on. So we then had to start buying medals and put the fancy little stickers on them, and I have to change the years every year on them. This year, we decided to have them engraved in his honor, and we had a individual from the North Central Technical College who did them for us. So now that they, they're not as great as Bob's washers, but they're, I'm hoping he approves. We love using and highlighting the talents of our community and our students and former students. We have Stevens Point orthopedics that come and help provide the medical service. We want to thank the city of Stevens Point for helping us and having people on staff and having all those kids come from Spash to help. It is a tremendous amount of help. As you know, if you've ever been there, it is a huge overtaking. And we also enjoy having the Spash media students come and project, do the production and do the videos. Parents can buy and have that commemorative piece. This year, we're gonna be live streaming, so if Grandma and Grandpa can't come, they can watch, or classes can watch, and, you know, those third graders can get excited for their fifth and sixth grade years. So, the reason why I'm telling you this, well, because this is the 50th Annual Jean LaRose Track Meet, and as I mentioned, I've been working with him since last year on this meet. One of the cool things is that we've had a local running club generously donate a lot of money, so that every fifth and sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade student will have a commemorative T-shirt in their student's color for their schools, and that will be worn on the first day, so that everybody looks the same with their school spirit, and nobody has to worry about not having their T-shirt at their school. So that was a huge generous gift from them and, and their physical education teachers and coaches, and it's to encourage us to keep active and to stay running. The dates, as you noticed on your invitation, is May 21, and Wednesday, May 22, from 9:30 is when opening ceremonies occur to about 2:15. So on the 21st at 9:30, we're having a very large opening ceremony to recognize some of the first-place winners that were in the very first meet. So, those individuals who ran in 1970 are coming back, and we're gonna be honoring those first-place winners, as well as the retired PE teachers that offered so much of their time and dedication to this meet. So the meet is gonna start promptly at 10 o'clock. We do not like being late. We want to make sure it gets going. We are providing lunch to those honorees at 11:30 with our school food services here, and they're gonna be honored over in the Willet area. So I'm here on behalf of the Elementary Physical Education Department to personally invite you all to the 50th Annual Jean LaRose Elementary Track Meet. We would like to honor you with a medal for your continuing support and encourage to wear them as your kind of badge of honor. And then, if you've never attended this meet, I encourage you, so, there has never been an event that brings so much fulfillment and joy to an educator than to see over 1,000 elementary students participate and represent their school like this meet. It makes all the work, trust me, it's a lot of work, that goes into this meet so worthwhile, when those schools, they give up their victory cheers, and it just brings so much pride and joy for us as educators to just see that continue every year, and I'm proud to be involved with it for the last 25 out of the 50, so, please come.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Guaranteed nice weather? Yeah, thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right, so that's coming up, and it is. It's joyful, and the, the great thing is the most coveted award is the Spirit Award, which is, I think, the final award that's presented at the end, and it's a huge competition for spirit, which is amazing. So, all right, thank you. Moving on to item E, which is Spash FCC LA State Convention. Connie's going to talk with us about the Leadership Conference that was held on April 8 through the 10.
Actually, the next two items. Brett Lesniuk is a Family and Consumer Science teacher at Spash. In addition to those responsibilities, she's the advisor for HOZA and for FCC LA. She has brought students with her to share with you some of the incredible leadership opportunities that both of those groups have been involved in this year. So Brett.
I have a few students from the Spash FCC LA, and they're part of the Competitive Event Team from this year, that are going to come on forward and present to you about what their team did this year.
I'm Casey Summers, Vice President of Competitive Events.
I'm Caitlin Ingabretson. I'm First Vice President.
I'm Erin Kelly. I'm Vice President of Records.
And I'm Abby Rosenthal, and I'm a state competitor and national.
Spash Family, Career, Community Leaders of America, or FCC LA, attended the Wisconsin State Fall FCC LA Leadership Conference April State Fall FCC LA Leadership Conference, April 8th through the 10th. This chapter had 26 members competing as an individual or with a team in 16 competitive
The chapter received fantastic results with nine scoring at the gold level and seven scoring at the silver level.
This included 12 out of the 14 national events, being awarded first or second place in the state and being invited to compete at the National FCC LA Leadership Conference this summer in Anaheim, California, from June 30th to July 5th.
17 members are able to attend Nationals and will be competing in 11 different events. These events range from career preparation events in the field of family and consumer science, to events in community service, leadership, advocacy, and teamwork.
Congratulations.
Next will be some of the representation from SPAS HOSA and their Competitive Event
Hello, I'm Shelby Halli, a state competitor.
Hi, I'm Emma Rush, also a state competitor.
Hi, I'm Skylar Peterson, also a state competitor.
I'm Macy Colbeck, and I'm also a state competitor.
I'm Jenna Storni, also a state competitor.
I'm Ashley Condon, and I'm also a state competitor.
I'm Izzy Roteer, and I'm also a state competitor.
SPAS HOSA Future Health Professionals attended the Wisconsin State HOSA Leadership Conference on April 14th through the 16th. The chapter had 27 members entering, competing as an individual or with a team in 11 competitive events. The chapter received fantastic results, including the CPR First Aid Team receiving the first place, Public Health taking second, and the Creative Problem Solving Team and Health Education Team receiving third place. Three other teams scored in fourth or fifth place. The groups receiving first, second, or third in the state have been invited to compete at the International HOSA Leadership Conference this summer in Orlando, Florida, on June 18th through the 23rd. 10 members are able to attend Internationals and will be competing in four different events.
SPAS HOSA also received recognition at state for being an outstanding HOSA chapter, participating in HOSA happenings, and the work they did for both the state and national service projects. Six members also received the Barbara James Service Award for their outstanding volunteer work in the healthcare field. Thank you.
So, we are moving into Item 7, which is our Consent Agenda. We have the Minutes of April 22nd, 2019 Organizational School Board Meeting. I believe that needs to be pulled out for a correction. We need to pull it out for correction. And so, we'll go ahead with the rest of the consent agenda, and then we'll do those minutes. So, we'll have the Minutes of the May 6th, 2019 Special School Board Meeting, the approval of the scheduled monthly bills, and the employment recommendations. And you all received an updated personnel recommendations sheet on your desk today. We're clearly at that time of year where, day by day, Beth is doing an incredible job, ensuring that we are having the best and the most talented people who are applying to our district being hired by us. So, that's going to continue for us over the next month or two. So, I could have a motion and a second with respect to those second set of minutes and the employment recommendations and the scheduled monthly bills. Any discussion or questions? I will have Heidi call the roll because of the bills.
Ms. Fang?
I just have her call the roll because of the bills, because it's financial. Yeah, aye.
Ms. Daly?
Yep.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannell?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And with respect to the Minutes of April 22nd, 2019, do I have a motion?
I will move to approve those, however, I just want to make one small amendment. On, what section was it? Section 8, Selection of Board and Committee Meeting Dates and Times. That was unanimous consent, and it was eight of you all voting against me. I voted no, and that should be reflected in the minutes.
I have another correction. It was not unanimous vote for president. I voted, I did not vote. I had emailed you that.
But that happened after the vote?
I did not vote in that vote. So, it's just a recusal.
Abstention? And it also indicates that Ms. Daly was elected clerk and treasurer.
Yes.
That should be.
Okay, so, would you like to amend your motion?
To include their amendments.
Okay. Do I have a second to that? I have a second. Any further questions or changes for those minutes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move into Item Business Services. A, Business Services Human Resources Committee Chair Report, Amy Daly.
All right. We had a busy meeting, and we got it done. That's Business Services. So, first up is the Nexus Agreement. This is Phase 3. I believe most of you were here for the presentation and information that was discussed. Phase 3 is simply approving the contract in regards to the third phase, obviously, which is how they go about getting bids and the agreements with Nexus in regards to the bidding process. And, yeah, so, this is exactly what we expected. Early on, it was pretty much what the board was presented with when Nexus was originally hired. And so, it has been vetted through legal and reviewed thoroughly by Dr. Owens, so that I move to approve the AIA document agreements, B-144, ARCHCM, and B-101, 2017, with Nexus as presented.
Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions?
In light of the dollar amounts, should we do a roll call?
Yeah, that's, yes, I was going to say we should do a roll call on this.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Fang?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannell?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yep.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Moving into Item 9, Human Resources, and we have the new student, well, Amy, do you want to go and handle that?
Yep, that's me again. So, Business Services and HR, we do it all. So, new student services position, teacher of the visually impaired and orientation and mobility. So, currently, we're working with CISA and having a teacher provided for this at a higher cost than if we would hire this person ourselves. And so, this is to, and I believe it's like, we can do it at 80% of what we're currently paying now, or it's quite a bit less, and then even have the potential of outsourcing this person to neighboring districts who might need them and recouping some more of that money. So, it's really a win-win, and we have them more than we would have them if they were through CISA. So, this is a move to approve the hire of district visually impaired in orientation and mobility teacher.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Parallel Education Services. This is for substitute teachers and filling in those daily vacancies as we would need them for on-call people. Their presentation was provided, and I believe everybody got a packet of information from them. And this is to approve a contract with them, starting July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2021. Should we approve this? They do plan on opening a local office and being involved business in the community, which would help them with finding and retaining substitute teachers. So, for that, I'll move to approve the contract with Parallel Education to provide substitute services from July 1, 2019, through June 30th, 2021.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
I have one comment. So, I appreciated the presentation at the committee. I thought that they did a good job, and I'm in favor of this. But, as a person that's located in my business, is located in a suite of offices where there are several, where there are just empty offices, and they are dark all the time, I'm going to ask if we can make one very small amendment to the contract. And I don't know if we wrote this contract or if they wrote the contract. I don't see the representatives here. In Section 4, it says, "Parallel will maintain a local office in Stevens Point." And I would ask that if that could be added, maintain and staff an office, so we know there are actually human beings in it. I know they said last week that that was important to them, and that was something that they would be doing, but it feels like it should be in the contract.
Beth, you okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine. Yeah.
I think I even asked the question when they got done. Are you really going to open up an office? And they said, "Yes." I assume that means there's going to be somebody in the office.
Well, yeah, but that isn't what the contract says.
So, you have an amendment?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions with respect to the amendment, which would be to revise the contract to indicate maintain and staff a local office? All those in favor with the amendment with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion or questions with respect to the contract as amended?
Thank you for catching that, lawyer. Lawyer trick job.
All right, so, we have a motion as amended on the floor. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We're moving into Educational Services. Educational Services Committee Chair, Barbara Portson.
Okay, we had our meeting last Monday as well. We had a couple of informational presentations by Student Services, one on a newer effort called the Point Academy to deal with behavioral issues. It's going to be located out at the Pods Building. And we also heard another presentation for formative assessment for special needs for employability skills to help those kids transition from elementary to junior high, and then ultimately to senior high. Then, we, our next item is the opt-out. We had, I think, 26 parents. I remembered that. Holy cow. 26 parents who opted out for their student to take the state testing. And the state testing has already happened, so this is kind of a procedural thing. We have to submit this. So, I would move to approve the written parent requests to exercise their choice to opt-out their students from the state testing program.
Second. I have a second. So, there is a motion on the floor to approve the written parent requests to exercise their choice to opt-out. Any questions or discussion from board members?
One question. Craig, you mentioned something, and that kind of jumped out right away at you. Grade 10, the number of students, 11 students.
Yeah.
It's a lot larger than the others. I'm just wondering if...
Was there anything?
Yeah, I'm guessing what's happening there is, students in grades nine and 10 take the ASPIRE test, and some families probably feel that taking that test two years in a row isn't necessary. However, we can use that as a practice test, working up to the ACT. So, it's not abnormal to have that many students in grade 10 opt-out.
Okay. I just, yeah, Craig saw that, and I meant to ask if they looked at that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item was Rural Virtual Academy Consortium, and I think I'd like somebody to briefly discuss what that is, so we can have that taped for public.
Dana Breed is the Online Learning Coordinator at SPAS. That's our local online program, mainly for students who are taking an online class here or there for a variety of reasons, maybe a scheduling conflict, maybe a course that we don't offer. Many of the online classes are taught by our own teachers, so our students have access to those teachers, which is a really important part of being successful as an online student. Dana was approached by Charlie Heckel, who is the District Administrator for the Rural Virtual Academy, which you might have seen commercials on TV about this particular consortium. It's a consortium of 23 school districts to provide ultimately just the online portion. So, in other words, students who are attending school full-time, online. We have 13 kids in our district right now who are our resident kids who open enroll to Medford to be a part of the RVA program. The reason that they are so successful is that they're online teachers. There are requirements for kids to have face-to-face time with them. They provide counseling services. They provide tutoring services. And so, this became appealing for their success. They have a proven record of success, serving a number of districts. But, the other part of it is that they have an elementary programming that we don't have right now in our district. Our online program is serving students in grades seven through 12. So, Dana brought this as another, certainly, our online program is still going to serve us locally for our students. I think we had 147 kids access an online class this past year. That will still be in place. This will enhance our online program. Will be part of a consortium for those kids who are attending school. It's another option for families. But, since we have so many kids that are open enrolling, we might as well be a part of this consortium and offer that for our families. So, again, it's simply our being a part of RVA, a very successful record of success program, and then we would be a part of that consortium. Our kids then could stay in our resident district. They can participate in activities. The classes are accredited by the NCAA. So, again, it's just an enhancement for our program.
Any questions of Connie?
Thanks, Connie.
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, we talked about this at the committee meeting, which, of course, is not taped, and our families that are watching wouldn't have seen this. But, I had a couple of questions that I thought you answered really well at the committee meeting, so I'm going to ask you again. You got to practice.
I hope I give the same answer.
I hope you give the same answer. First of all, is our online, our current online coordinator in favor of this, Dana Breed?
Absolutely. And, you know, she was planning, I don't see Dana here, but she is the one that did approach us as this could be an additional part of our online center. So, this will not take away from the Online Learning Center. This is just a different option for full-time online students.
So, this augments what we have. It doesn't replace what we have.
It does not replace what we have. It adds a benefit for elementary students who want to do online. We don't have an elementary program, and it also just adds another component to what we're offering for our kids.
Okay. And the money question, the 13 kids, do we then get to count them as part of our...
Those families will be told about this option. Students who then want to do pure online, they will now become our students. We get the state aid for those students, and then we pay RVA for the educational services.
And yes, your answers were the same.
Any further questions of Connie? So, I think we need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 66-0301 Affiliated Member Agreement, Shared Virtual Learning Services between Rural Virtual Academy and Stevens Point Area Public School District for 2019-2020.
I'll second it. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
And you want to do the professional development?
This last item from Educational Services is just a real brief informational report. We are in our second year of professional development hours as a part of our compensation plan. So, this is just a second report to the board about the number, the percent of our teachers that have completed their PD hours. This year, 93% of our teachers completed their 15 hours, completed many, many more hours than that. Last year, it was 77%. We offered 333 courses, and these are mainly courses that are provided... Um, we offered 333 courses, and these are mainly courses that are provided by our own district staff to their colleagues. It's been incredibly successful using the talents of our staff. Um, they're offering flexible schedules so that people have that opportunity based on their lives to provide, whether it's an online program, it's a face-to-face program, whether it's after-school, um, book reads, all sorts of, uh, different opportunities. If you look on the, um, the, the back part of the, or the end of the report, it's really interesting that, because we've looked at the number of hours that our teachers have devoted to different pillars that we have, um, been working on in ed services, um, high-quality instruction, um, social-emotional learning. It clearly shows that we have targeted areas that teachers are looking to improve their instruction or to enhance their knowledge in those particular areas. So, um, kudos to our staff who have provided a number of digital opportunities, as well as face-to-face, um, opportunities, and our tech ed offer, offerings are second to none. So that's just a report.
I think it's just incredible what has happened in two years. I mean, when you think of, two years ago, we were saying to Connie, all right, now you have to build some programs. And...
She doesn't sleep.
And what's, what, what has happened just since that? I mean, um, with staff stepping up to, to want to provide instruction, um, and staff stepping up to, again, the, the requirement is 15 hours, but we have staff that are going way over and above that to take advantage of the opportunities, so, um, anyway, wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Moving into 12, technology. A, district phone system approval. And I think, Brian, do you wanna just come up and... This is something we've been talking about also for quite some time.
Yeah, so, uh, we've, we've come to a decision regarding the IP phone system for the school district, uh, and we just wanted to go over the RFP process with you and seek the board's approval of, uh, awarding that contract to, uh, Heartland Business Systems for Cisco Phone System, uh, in the approximate amount of $362,951. And I can certainly answer any questions you might have regarding that decision.
This was, this was envisioned as part of the, the recurring part of the referendum, right?
Uh, it's part of the bond referendum.
Oh, it is, okay.
Sort of a capital investment in technology, so there were a number of projects that were identified as part of the bond referendum. Uh, the, the actual operational referendum, there is money set aside in that also to add for the, um, annual reoccurring costs of maintaining those types of systems.
My recollection is, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, is that this was part of the security measures in addressing security in the schools.
Uh, absolutely. I mean, if you don't have communications, you can't have good security, so, uh, that was a crucial need. Uh, it also is part of our business operations, just normal functioning of a school district. You can't do business if you don't have reliable phone communications, and I'll just say, when we went through the process of pricing out the system, some of the engineers that worked on the different RFPs are actually younger than the phone system that we have in the district currently.
I was gonna ask, how, how old is the phone system?
Uh, well, it depends. We, when we bought it, I think it was, uh, outdated, 15 years old, so you can do the math on that, probably 20 years.
Brian, when would you start and finish? When do you think it would...
As soon as the, we, uh, obtain approval, contingent upon the board's approval, uh, we'll work on finalizing that contract. The goal is to have this, uh, installed in July and up and running in early August.
Okay, thanks.
So, maybe this is a dumb question, but there's $500,000, almost $450,000 difference between the high and the low. Are you happy with the Cisco system?
Absolutely. We, we received a phenomenal offer from Cisco. It was actually a preferred vendor of ours, but we did our, our due diligence to find the, the best, uh, system cost-wise, but Cisco is, uh, very well-known for providing IP phone systems and communications, and, uh, they provided pricing that, uh, has never been seen by this district or, in fact, uh, many others for a number of years, if ever.
Yeah, I feel like there's a catch somewhere.
Um, well, it, it's a business, and I think part of it is that they look at market share and other things, and they're trying to get into the K-12 market, and they, uh, gave us a phenomenal deal on, on the hardware side of things. We had phones that were priced significantly lower than any other competitor.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions of Brian?
Move to approve the purchase of a new district IP phone system from Heartland Business Services at a cost of $362,951, and to authorize the board president to sign the resulting contract.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you, Brian. Okay, moving into item 13, general, A, referendum projects update.
Well, last week, uh, at our committee meeting, we approved, um, the, approved, and then we have then awarded, uh, bids to, for Benton Franklin, Plover, Whiting, and Washington. So we are, uh, moving on those projects. We are looking forward, uh, this week to get bids for the HVAC at Spash, and then the remainder of the Spash, um, uh, projects will be coming in, I think in about two weeks. So we'll be coordinating that with, with, um, our next June board meeting. You know, we'll run into possibly the same thing we did last week. We have a committee meeting prior to. I know it's, it's not favorable to, to sandwich a, a board meeting in between committee meetings, but if all of the projects are in, and we know and it's clear who we'd like to award those to, we want to get that approved as, as soon as possible, so we'll, um, buy a little bit of time, but we're gonna see those, um, bids becoming in, they'll be coming in, uh, shortly. And then we're beginning, uh, to create our teams for this, um, late this summer, going into the fall, to, uh, address the issues for the following summer. So this will just be going on, on, you know, it'll be just going on, uh, um, one semester to the next, through the summer, for the next three, maybe longer years. Lots going on right now.
It's gonna be a busy summer in the buildings.
And all the bids that we approved on Monday, um, were accepted, and nobody had moved on and lost hope in us.
No, they're all, uh, Tom met with, uh, Nexus last Thursday, um, to get those contracts, um, completed, and, you know, we're guaranteed to have the work that we, that we approved last week. So the bids are coming in, uh, timely, and we're happy with, uh, the vendors, and we're right now, you know, costs, we'll be talking about costs, you know, from here on out, but, you know, right now, as we, as we, as we said, we're, you know, within our costs, so that's always good.
Any questions of Craig? With respect to referendum, what's happening within the next month or so, 'cause he'll be back talking about it in another month.
If not sooner.
All right, thanks, Craig. Item B, meeting dates, times, locations. We've got our, uh, school, our next school board meeting will be June 10th. Um, we have one scheduled tentatively for July 8th. We also have honed in on a, um, a board retreat date with cabinet, um, so if anybody has specific questions, but thank you to all the board members for responding very timely to Heidi with respect to that, um, retreat.
I do have one comment about a future item on, uh, the graduation ceremony. In two spots, there's different times for that, and Heidi is going to check on it for us, but it, one spot it's 10:30, and another spot it was 11:00, and we got an invitation...
Offer sentry for project search.
And I think, I think it was 11:00, but, um, Heidi is gonna let us know for sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Barb. Okay, moving on to item 14, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session under 1985 Part N1, Part N C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, and 1985 Part N1, Part N E, with respect to deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Move to go into closed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let Mike have it.
Any discussion or questions? I will have Heidi call the roll.
Ms. Rannell?
Yes.
Ms. Daly? Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Fang?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It was just about five minutes to set up the room.